... to be taken. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Counselor Sperry, Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Counselor Curtis.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Counselor Herbig.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Excuse.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will be approved as submitted. Are there any objections? Okay, the agenda stands approved as submitted. And now we have a couple of presentations. Our Finance Director, Joanne Gregory, and City Manager, Rob Carlinsey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Van Ness and councilmembers. I just want to say a couple of words first. So tonight is a very bittersweet time because we want to acknowledge and celebrate Patty Safran's retirement at this, her last council meeting, but also to express how much we'll miss her. Patty has been with the city for over 11 years and the last four-plus have been a city clerk. Patty really immersed herself in this important role and as she improved her knowledge of the clerk functions and responsibilities, she found ways to share and enhance all of our understanding as well. She has so much to look forward to in retirement: peaceful mornings, good books, long walks, travel, and of course, time with her new grandchildren. So Patty, my hope for you is that this next phase of your life will bring you all the peace and joy that you deserve. And we want to thank you for your service to the city of Kenmore. So if you would come up, please.
Thank you very much. I've loved working at the city of Kenmore. And I'm sorry to go, but I am looking forward to, you know, all the things that I want to do in the future, especially my grandchildren and traveling and reading and being outside more. I've really, really enjoyed working with this council. You're great people and you work well together and it's been a pleasure. And I'm going to miss all my coworkers and I'm going to miss all the fun things that are happening. But I'll come back and, you know, take the grandchildren to activities and go to this town square. I'll see you around. Thanks.
We look forward to seeing you.
Your Honor, I might say that I said the same thing when I retired eight years ago. But I've been busier than ever. I don't know how I got anything done when I was working, so.
Your Honor, if I could just add a couple of things. So Patty became the city clerk soon after I arrived and she was a godsend. She really did a lot to improve the overall function of the city clerk's office. She improved the efficiency and our record-keeping and just brought it all to a whole new level. She also has an excellent command of the English language. She is a very good writer and I can always depend on her to improve my documents, to be, to find the edits and the typos and make it just a much cleaner reading and elegant-sounding document. So thank you for all that. And the last thing is, I've always thought city clerk is the wrong title. And I think a better title is steward of democracy. Because that's what the city clerk does. They are the steward of this democratic process that goes on here at City Hall. And so much of what the city clerk does makes it possible for us to complete what we do. So very important that your position is and thank you for all you've done for us, Patty. Appreciate it.
And we wish you the best. And please do come back. You see Janice in here quite often coming in, visiting and saying hello. So, thank you. Next item is a presentation on the old 520 Bridge demolition. Manager Carlinsey?
Thank you, Your Honor. We've asked Greg Wingard to come and give a presentation tonight, but unfortunately, he's under the weather and we've made arrangements for him to call in. So I'm going to dial his number really quick.
Hello?
Hi, Greg.
Yep.
Okay, we've got you in front of the City Council and the City Council meeting. And what I'll do is I'll just give a little intro and then we'll have you say, talk about your presentation, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, just so for the councils and the audience benefit, so the 520 Bridge construction has been going on since 2011. And in May of this year, we were alerted that the demolition of the old bridge might occur in Kenmore. We took action to block the demolition of the old bridge in Kenmore. Long story short, we came to a settlement agreement with KGM where they could transport demolished materials through Kenmore, but they could not actually do any demolition work in Kenmore. And that transport of materials had to occur under strict conditions, including the way they unloaded it from the barge and the way the trucks were loaded and the trucks had to be covered and some other conditions. At that time, we made that decision based on data and information that we had available to us, including contaminant data that was provided us by KGM. Since then, Greg Wingard has done some investigatory work, done some requests for public records, and has discovered some additional information that I will let him share with you and take it from here. And Greg, are you ready to take it at this point?
Sure.
Okay.
So I thought what I'd do is just briefly run through a timeline. Some of you may be familiar with parts of this as it was included in my, well, the timeline wasn't. The parts of it were included in my letter to Rob Carlinsey, who shared it with City Council. In 2015, sometime before July, KGM and/or Washdot became aware that the pontoon superstructure section of the bridge, the floating bridge that they were going to tear down, was likely contaminated with arsenic. And that had to do with the facility that did the pour and the casting of those components of the bridge, the facility being in Tacoma. So they, in July of 2015, took some samples, four samples, and analyzed those for total metals arsenic as they had reason to believe that arsenic contamination was a concern with this particular facility. Those results came back and showed 55 to 66 parts per million of arsenic in the cement out of the pontoon superstructure area of the bridge. In November of 2015, so, you know, several months later from the July samples, they sampled another section of the bridge, not the pontoon superstructure, and also sampled it for total metals, specifically limited to arsenic. Those samples came back as less than the limit of detection, which generally was right around eight parts per million. It varied a little bit from sample to sample, but from the high sevens to 8.1 parts per million was the limit of detection. So those are the only two instances where they actually did total metal sampling and the only metals they sampled for were arsenic. So in 2016, well, in December of 2015, they got ahold of the Health Department. The Health Department pointed out to them that this facility in Tacoma had some other contaminants of concern in addition to arsenic, which included mercury, cadmium, and lead, and that they should sample total metals for those contaminants as well. And that they should run a specific type of toxicity test that requires the use of total metals analysis as well as doing what is called TCLP, which is the leaching test they did later. And that was due to, specifically due to concerns about the facility that made the concrete that is the pontoon superstructure or was the pontoon superstructure of the bridge. So in January of 2016, the Health Department said, "Well, here's what you have to sample for." They dropped the toxicity testing and just had them do eight TCLP metals, what are referred to as the RICRA metals for the federal law that deals with that. So the eight RICRA metals and pH. And here are the standards you have to meet. And they provided a list. So those samples were run in January of 2016 and showed that the TCLP concentration of the metals were basically at or below limits of detection, which for arsenic was 0.2 parts per million or milligrams per liter is the way it's actually reported in the test. It also showed, though, that the pH for all six of the samples taken, these are all the same samples, six samples that were run for metals and for pH. The six pH samples all came out at over a pH of 13. And the significance of that is a pH of 12 and 1/2 constitutes dangerous waste under state law. So all six samples designated as dangerous waste, which should have been immediately flagged, both by the company itself, by the environmental engineer at Washington Department of Transportation, and by the Health Department. And it should have immediately disqualified that material from being shipped, disposed of, or anything done with until it was appropriately determined exactly how it would be handled in compliance with the Dangerous Waste Regulation, which did not happen. In February, the Department of Health, for some reason, signed off on this. And so KGM basically claimed that they gave the Health Department all of the data, which would be the pH data and the RICRA metals. The Health Department claims that they never saw the pH data. So in March of 2016, KGM did a presentation for Department of Ecology. They didn't actually provide them the data, but they did a PowerPoint presentation that said that the limits, the arsenic levels were around 50 to 60 parts per million and that the pH was over the limits for disposal at Reserve Silica. And remember, they're telling Ecology that a month after the Health Department had already given them permission to dispose of the material at Reserve Silica. So in April is when they basically redid, they did a reevaluation under the National Environmental Policy Act and State Environmental Policy Act, which say that if you have a project and significant new information comes to light, that you have to evaluate how significant it is. And if it materially changes anything in your EIS, you're supposed to do a reopen the NEPA/SEPA process, including letting the public know and doing an addendum. If it's really significant, you can have, you know, you may have to do an entirely new section of your EIS. So that reassessment happened in April 20th. And under that reevaluation, signed by both the Federal Highways Department and also by Washington State Department of Transportation, they said that GWIS, there's elevated levels of arsenic, but they're very low, you know, that's less than 0.2 parts per million of arsenic. But out of, you know, kind of an abundance of caution, we're going to dispose of all of the arsenic-contaminated material at a disposal site, not send it to recycling like we're doing with most of the bridge. And the information they provided there, they completely neglected to mention, and by the way, the stuff designated as dangerous waste because it's a pH of more than 13. And they also did not mention at all the 55 to 66 parts per million of arsenic. The only number mentioned in that document is 0.2 parts per million. So in May, as you are already aware, is when Kenmore came into this. And on May the 10th, you were in settlement negotiations with KGM. And in those settlement negotiations, the parties were talking about, you know, what was needed to provide council information and get this thing wrapped up. And that included that Kenmore needed to get from KGM the actual data that it had for the arsenic and also some information about where the material was going to be disposed of and who had signed off on it. That information was then provided by KGM a couple of days later, I believe it was May 12th, which in turn was provided then to your consultant, anchor QEA, to do a report on and tell you, you know, is this okay or not okay and what does this data mean? The data that was provided to Kenmore at that point failed to provide the 55 to 66 parts per million total metals arsenic data. It failed to provide the January pH data, which showed the material was dangerous waste. So what they sent instead is they sent the November 23rd total metal arsenic data. Instead of the July data that showed arsenic, they sent the November data that showed no arsenic from an area of the bridge they knew wasn't arsenic-contaminated. Because they had, by the time they were talking to you in May, they had already determined that the arsenic-related contamination was limited to the pontoon superstructure area of the bridge. And instead of sending you that data, they sent you the data for the approach area of the bridge, the area they knew wasn't contaminated with arsenic. So after doing that, they basically provided you with information that just was incomplete and would lead to some erroneous conclusions. So that leads up to June and July. In July, about the middle of the month, the public had a meeting with Washdot, KGM, and Department of Ecology. It included some city representatives, I believe from Medina. Part of our state delegation for the area was there, myself, a bunch of citizens. And in that meeting, we specifically mentioned concerns about arsenic and pH. And in spite of that, there was no response or mention from either Washdot or KGM of either the total metals data for arsenic that showed 55 to 66 parts per million or the high pH at over 13, which designated as dangerous waste. So in August, there was an appeal of the Shoreline Conditional Use Permit revision that was issued by the city of Medina. So in that appeal, the plaintiffs requested the data that was relied on by Medina in making their determination on the conditional use permit revision. And in that discovery that was then provided by the city and KGM to the plaintiff, it showed that they gave Medina even less information, this being KGM gave Medina less information than what they gave to Kenmore. So in that case, they only gave Medina the information on the eight RICRA metals, showing that things were pretty much below the levels of limits of detection, with the exception of barium. So essentially, in this timeline, what becomes pretty clear is that well before the demolition started, a year before the demolition started, KGM and Washdot were aware that a portion of the bridge was contaminated, likely contaminated with arsenic. They knew that because of the facility and problems that facility has at a location in Tacoma. The Health Department was aware of the problems with that facility as well and said additional metals need to be analyzed. That never happened. And the material came back with a very high pH, well over the limits that designated as dangerous waste. And the material was approved to send to a facility where it's not legal to send dangerous waste anyhow. And that wasn't uncovered until Department of Ecology investigated it in August in samples, the sample data was looked at in September. And that only happened because the citizen groups such as PERC in Lake Forest, groups in Lake Forest Park, and down in Laurelhurst Community were raising these issues with Department of Ecology. And Ecology agreed to further investigate based on the complaints we made and found, oh, there's this pH data. Which kicked off then in September, that they did some additional sampling around September 20th to basically show that the pH was something less than 12.5. And the reason that that was such a big deal is that if the pH results came back as being 12.5 or higher, it meant that Department of Ecology and King County, Public Health Seattle-King County, had essentially allowed a large company to knock down a very large bridge. And as what they would be, would be considered a large quantity generator of dangerous waste. And they allowed them to demolish dangerous waste, transport dangerous waste, ship it through Kenmore and ship it out to Reserve Silica, all illegally. So they were under considerable incentive to show that that wasn't, in fact, a pH 12.5 or higher. And what they did is essentially bumped up the size of the particles that were analyzed in order to get better results. Because the bigger the particle size, the lower the pH is going to be. And that, I, you know, we don't think that's an appropriate test unless they're actually segregating the material by size and all they're shipping is the larger fraction of material that actually is a lower pH. And basically, the two bodies of pH data have the same problem in the lab. That being that in order to appropriately do a pH sample, you have to calibrate that sample by using buffering solutions. And you have to bracket your sample result. So by that I mean, one of the solutions has to be at a pH that is a couple of units lower than what your expected result is and your other buffer solution has to be a couple of units higher than what your expected result is. In both cases, the higher end of the results were outside of the pH calibration range, which means that both of them were unreliable. Nonetheless, they went with less than 12.5 because it was the answer, you know, I think that they wanted. To be fair, a lot of that material is fairly large and it is probably true that the pH coming off that material would not be over 12.5. The other side of the coin is that a lot of that material gets crushed into a very fine powder. It's knocked down by water and it's going to be very high pH. So that's essentially the timeline. I think the primary issue for the council on this, and then I'd like to take a brief look at the letter that Washdot sent to Rob Carlinsey. But I think the outcome of that is that this is a result of a failure by Washdot and KGM to adequately consider the impacts of demolition in any cognitive fashion whatsoever. By that I mean that the EIS, which should have taken a look at the impacts of demolition, did not. That what should have been done is the bridge structure should have been assessed for its components and the materials that made it and its coatings up. And a sampling plan should have been developed to look at what the range of toxic contaminants and those various components were. And the EIS, or a revision of the EIS, should have considered, and the public should have been informed, what the agency was doing to address those specific materials and protect the environment and human health in regard to those specific materials. To this day, that has not happened. And they have deliberately decided, in the case of both the state agency and KGM, to not collect the information necessary, to either make that information available to the public or to take that information themselves and do the necessary analysis to determine the impact of what they're doing. The reason that that's particularly of a concern is that they are now proceeding to get ready to go to the next request for proposal for the next phase of bridge work. And that that bridge work is going to be done under the same kind of conditions they did the last work, where these issues are going to continue to be shoved under the carpet and not dealt with. And they're planning on doing the same things that they did for the floating bridge at the next section, the Motlake section of the bridge, as they construct a new bridge and knock down the old bridge there. They haven't yet said where they're going to send that material to. But given, given the way Kenmore set up and the work that's already gone into the facility there and all of that and the work that they would have to do to get new permits and figure out a new facility and all that, the odds are that the same reasons they went to Kenmore for the last stuff, they're going to attempt to go to Kenmore for the next batch as well. So I'd like to just briefly run through the points of the letter that was sent to Rob by Julie Meredith. And he had asked her a number of specific questions. The first being was, "With the higher and more toxic arsenic and pH levels in the old bridge structure now known to the city of Kenmore, are you concerned and should I be concerned?" And so essentially, she ducks the issue completely. She admits that there's 55 to 66 parts per million of arsenic in the bridge and basically included those results in her letter. But says that that just is the molecular, you know, what the molecular level of arsenic in the sample is. And then goes on to talk about TCLP. What she doesn't respond to at all that I covered in my letter to Rob is that TCLP, even though the first word is toxicity, that test has absolutely nothing to do with toxicity. The only thing that that test tells you is how likely, if you put that material into a landfill, is it to leach into the groundwater and potentially threaten groundwater or surface water when it comes out of the ground, surface waters, once it leaves the ground, once it leaves that site. It has absolutely nothing to do with either human health or environmental concerns. It's not the appropriate test for those purposes. She completely ducks that and does not discuss. She completely ducks that and does not discuss that matter at all. She doesn't discuss pH in there at all. And the simple fact of the matter is, pH doesn't have to be over 12.5 to be a problem for human health. That's just the level at which it becomes a designated dangerous waste. So the second question was, are you satisfied with KGM's practices and protocols to handle the old bridge material on the lake and through Kenmore to the landfill site? And, you know, the problem there is that they basically had data showing that the material designated as dangerous waste, had that in hand for eight months, had been basically disposing of the material at the site and shipping it through Kenmore from July through September, and never caught the fact somehow that it was dangerous waste. And I, I just don't know how that happens, that, that the health department, Department of Ecology, KGM, and their environmental people, WashDOT and their people, all somehow had a mind blank at the same time and didn't realize that they were illegally transporting dangerous waste. So the fourth question is that basically, I believe that there's low bias in the test results. This is for the pH. The low bias is that issue that I just discussed that has to do with the calibration. And she doesn't really, you know, answer, answer the questions directly. The bias is a matter of it not meeting, not meeting within that bracketed concentrations of the buffer solutions, which means that the data gets flagged for being potentially inaccurate because it's outside of the control parameters. And the issue is that both of the samples run, the samples that were run in September of this year through KGM, and the samples that were run the previous January by KGM. Both of those samples have the same problem, that for the high, highest pH readings, they were beyond the calibration level, and so they were, didn't meet the quality control, quality assurance parameters that are set out for that type of data. So is the old bridge material being handled, transported, and disposed of properly? So her answer, of course, is yes. My answer is that I have serious doubts about this. They were, the way that material was being unloaded from the barges was by using a front end loader. That's how they did it for the majority of the unloading that took place. There's video clips, there's photographs, et cetera. I reviewed a lot of those materials, and one of the things that I noticed was that the front end loader would go off the barge, dump the load into a truck on shore, go back onto the barge, pick up another load, repeat as necessary till the barge is unloaded. And that is a lot of front end loader loads. In doing that, they basically, every time they went off the ramp and onto the property at Kenmore Yard, they were tracking the smaller particles and sludge that was in the bottom of the barge on the tires of the front end loader out onto the shore. And that happened every time that front end loader drove off, off the barge. They don't really address that here at all. They finally stopped doing that as a result between meetings with some attorneys, with KGM attorneys, saying, you really shouldn't be doing this, and they agreed to actually stop doing it. But it is how they did it for the majority of the project. So the, the last question, number seven, was also have some questions about the rest of the West section of the project, and, you know, whether it's actually going to Kenmore, and will Kenmore have any role in that? And they kind of ducked that issue too. I mean, basically, what she has to say there is that the next phase isn't starting right away until 2018, and that the, they basically haven't determined that, and it's the old design build dodge, that, you know, the contractor kind of decides the best way to do the job, and we can't really tell the contractor what to do. So if they decide they want to go to some site and pick someplace to do something other than what we've recommended or what we've talked about previously, they have the right to do that. Which really isn't a very good answer, because it leaves you in the same position that you were last time, that you won't find out until very late in the game that you're it, and then your time to respond and to try and get adequate information, and to try to make them come clean to give you what you need to make an adequate decision is lacking. So in closing, I would just say that the problem here is that the last line of defense for citizens is the local government zoning and permitting processes, where local city councils, like yourselves, take a look at what's being proposed and determine whether this is something that's in line with your, your duty to protect your citizens. And in the case of both your community and Medina, KGM simply lied to you. I mean, there's no real other way to put it. They knew that the pH was high, they had the data in hand, it was the very same data from the same samples as the metals data they did send to you, it was the same sample group prepared by the same lab on the same day in the same data report. They gave you the metal samples, they didn't give you the pH samples. I don't believe it was a mistake you didn't get the pH samples. The same way with the total metal sample data they sent you, they sent you November data saying, oh, there's no arsenic at the limit of detection, while they withheld from you the information that in the pontoon superstructure, they knew it was arsenic contaminated at way, you know, very elevated levels. Background for arsenic's around 10 to 12 parts per million, the limit for arsenic under the Model Toxics Control Act is 20 parts per million. The sample data they had showed that it was 55 to 66 parts per million. So that right there is enough to tell you that in terms of whether you want that material around, you know, citizens in the community, that there would be cause, at least for concern and for a pretty thorough analysis, and you never had a chance to get that analysis or to express any of those concerns because they didn't give you the info. And I will close my comments there.
Okay, well, thank you. I think we could take a few minutes for questions, if any of the council have questions. Councilmember Herbig?
Well, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Wingard. It was both enlightening and frankly disturbing. It seems obvious to me that KGM was not operating in good faith. We have no reason to believe that they will in the future. I hope that we will be vigilant going forward and work to ensure that the RFP on the rest of the West explicitly excludes Kenmore for demolition or shipping of demolition, demolished materials. One quick question, Greg. Knowing what we know now, in your opinion, would the best management practices have been, would the same BMPs have been used that we currently have in place, knowing what we know now? Or do you believe changes would have been made or other BMPs been put into place?
Well, yeah, there would have, in my opinion, there would have been changes made pretty early on. One was in terms of the material coming off of the barge, that if Kenmore would have had the information in hand and its consultant looking at it, I'm reasonably confident that they would have said, you know, this material, there's enough concerns about parts of it, that it needs to be containerized somehow to make sure that nothing is touching the shoreline. And you made some attempts to do that, but they end up handling the material in a way that that wasn't assured in any case. And the other thing that would likely have happened is that some consideration would have had to have been given to segregating the material based on its size, and to make sure that the finer fraction of material is separate and was handled separately from the, you know, gravel size and up, say half inch up sized material, would not be just mixed in with the really fine particulate material. That step alone would have taken care of a lot of the concerns, and should be something considered for any future work done with this type of concrete.
Thanks, Greg.
Are there any other questions?
I would say too, that the underlying thing here is that once the process for the next phase starts with the RFP going out for bids on the contract, is that the city is going to have to be diligent in looking at what's in that RFP and determining whether or not the scope of the RFP is adequate to consider the same problems that, you know, my letter and other materials that have been presented to council indicate were allowed to slip through the cracks the last time around.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thanks, Greg, for the, the information in the letter and your work on this. I do have a question, I guess it's probably more for our city manager. The fact that when we dealt with this the first time around, and we had to deal with the legal nonconforming use being a heavy industrial site, is there, there was already a contract in place between the state and the contractor, if I recall at the time we were dealing with it. And I'm wondering if, now that we know that we are on a new contract, there will be a new RFP, is there anything in our code or based on what we know that we could approach this from a discontinuation of a legal nonconforming use?
That's, that's a really great question, and I've been asking that question as well, and I think we need to take a look at that and quickly figure out if, what we can do to proactively address the rest of the West. And so what I'd like to do is work with our city attorney and our development services director, and come back to you with some recommendations on that.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, just add a couple more things. So Anchor QEA has been our consultant through this, even not, not just at settlement negotiations, but also to help me through this information that Greg Wingard has exposed. I've been trading voicemails with Dan Berlin in the last couple days, haven't actually spoken to him yet, but I mean to. And that is regarding the WashDOT response, and the response to the seven questions that I asked WashDOT and Ecology and Health and Puget Sound Clean Air. And just, just from a very brief voicemail that I got from Dan Berlin, he agrees with Greg that in question one, the pH concentrations were not addressed in the answer. Also, on question three, it's really not about the T clip or the TCLP, but it's more about the bulk metals, and that's something that we should try to get an answer on. T clip has to do with how the material interacts in a landfill, whereas the, the bulk materials tell you actually what's in there. And so Dan Berlin recommends that we ask a little more information on question, on question three. As far as whether this changes things as far as best management practices, as you can see, the agencies, and when I mean agencies, I mean WashDOT, Ecology, Health, and Puget Sound Clean Air, they're not seeing that best management practices need to change. I'd like to talk to Dan Berlin at Anchor QEA a little further to get his take on that, and whether he thinks best management practices should have been adjusted based on this data that Greg has worked so hard to get to us. So I need a little, little time to talk to Anchor QEA, and my recommendation, and feel free to discuss amongst yourselves and ask more questions, but my recommendation is for us to get more information from Anchor QEA, evaluate our options with the city attorney, and get back to you. If it involves litigation, it may mean getting back to you in executive session. But I think we need a few weeks here to evaluate our options, get good legal advice, and return and report back to you. And I want to thank Greg, and Elizabeth, and everybody else who has brought this information to light. It's been very helpful and informative, and really opened my eyes to how things, what things were going on. So, thank you very much.
Any other, councilmember Curtis?
So Greg, this is Milton Curtis. In light of protecting our city and our citizens, do you think there'd be any benefit in testing the soil where the, that they've been offloading the material? So the question, one of the questions in my mind is, has there been contamination from the barges onto the soil? And then if there would be a benefit in that, would it be something we could ask the health department or the Department of Ecology to actually run the test as opposed to the city paying for it?
Well, yeah, I, I think that is a very good point. I think that the sediments immediately around the barge area where they're offloading, they dock and offload the barges, should be sampled, and I think the area where they've been transferring the material by front end loader to the trucks close to the shoreline on the Kenmore Yard site should be sampled. The way that I observed them doing dust suppression with fire hoses doesn't lend itself to material containment very well. By that, I mean that the way the water was being horizontally sprayed at the concrete surface, the crushed up concrete, and the material was being tracked on, on the tractor wheels, I, I would imagine a lot of that ended up getting tracked out. When I was doing consulting work for people that owned sites, one of the first things that I would have a client do in that circumstance was establish a wheel wash, and any trucks leaving the site would have to go through a wheel wash before they would be allowed offsite. That's an absolutely standard BMP that should have been implemented on day one at the Kenmore Yard site and never was, and I have no, no good idea as to why that wasn't implemented. But yes, I think that sampling the nearshore area by where the loading operations happen and the shallow sediment right off of where the barge was unloaded should be done, and you already have some background information from out of the, out of the channel there as to what was found for arsenic contamination previously. So if you do a total metals analysis and you find arsenic, you even have something to compare it to to determine whether it's the same or different from what's previously seen in that particular channel.
How about the second? How about the second question of asking the health department or the Department of Ecology to cover the cost for that?
Well, yes, I, I think that's perfectly appropriate. I don't know if I would ask the health department, I would perhaps directly ask the county executive. You know, the health department in this situation is in a bit of a, you know, a bit of a strange position, and they're the ones who authorize this when they shouldn't have, and, you know, so I would think that you would probably be best off going straight to the executive and asking him to allocate some funding to pay for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbig, then we have to wrap it up. We'll get one more.
That's a quick question for maybe, well, this is for either Rob or the city attorney, but, and this might be approaching kind of an executive session question, so if it is, maybe we should get it answered in executive session. But do we feel with the withholding of the information that KGM had while we were negotiating the settlement agreement, that they are out of compliance with the settlement agreement? Are they in breach?
I'd have to discuss that with Bill Linton, who's been working on this. I don't have an answer for that tonight, sorry.
No, it's fair enough. I'd like to get an answer to that, though, if, you know, if not out here in executive session at some point.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I was just... Yes, I wanted to know, do we happen to know when the state is going to have the RFP?
Next year.
Rest of the West?
Yes.
I'm looking at the...
My point of the question is, I just want to make sure that it doesn't go out prior to us having resolved what issues we need to at the city. And if we think there's any chance that it is going to go out sooner, if we can somehow have some kind of, you know, amendment or addendum to it that addresses the fact that we're concerned that it wasn't, things weren't done correctly the first time.
I think it might be the spring.
Okay.
Yeah, it just says, and I can get a more detailed timeline, but it says, "We anticipate hiring a contractor in 2017 and starting construction in 2018."
Yeah, and I saw that. My only concern is I just wanted to make sure if we could be proactive before the RFP went out, it would be nice to have that information.
Okay. Again, Greg, thank you so much for sharing all this with us. I think we've all looked at the letter that you wrote initially and studied that, but you've explained things more fully here tonight. And I think this, to me, in a nutshell, my opinion is, they fooled us once, but they won't fool us again. And I think we're going to have a number of conversations about these issues going on from now. We're not making any decisions tonight, but because of what has come to light, we will be a little more, a little more critical of what's being told to us in these negotiations. So, thank you very much for sharing all that with us, Greg. Appreciate it. Hope you're feeling better.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the council members for your attention. And I would make a quick recommendation, that being that it would probably be a good idea to send a letter off to the Army Corps, WashDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, and Department of Ecology indicating that you want a comment period on the RFP and the ability for the public to submit comment before the RFP goes out in the final form.
That's good.
Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to add, Rob? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda, citizen comments.
And I see from the faces that are in the, in the audience, a number of you are probably here to listen to what Greg had to say and to state your opinion here. But if it is something that's repeating what we've already heard and discussed, try to keep it to a minimum. It's an opportunity for you to express your views. We won't get into a dialogue with you here in the council meeting, but if it's something that requires an answer from staff or somebody, they'll get back to you in the next week or so. So will the clerk please call the first person?
Ann Hurst. Hi, I'm Ann Hurst. I live in Kenmore at 6302 Northeast 151st Street. I'm actually talking about the playfield at St. Edward State Park, and in relation to that, the stream, the headwaters of Stream 0226, which crosses the southeast corner of the moat area of the playfield. In the first map I'm going to give you, there's one copy for each of you. In March 2008, Adelson Inc. said that the headwaters of Stream 0226 connect to the wetland at the southeast corner of the ball field. It was a continuous stream. In 2009, the King County Sensitive Areas Map showed the stream 0226 crossing that little southeast moat corner and going into the wetland that is south of the playfield and forming a continuous stream to Lake Washington. If you look at the park manager's map in the main park office, it will show that little stream crisscrossing the southeast corner of the moat area of the playfield, connecting to the wetland and continuing on to the outlet at the beach. And finally, there is the 8 for 2016 Critical Areas Map by Adolfson, which shows the headwater of the stream moving 200 feet towards the southwest without any explanation. So there is a question of science here. We have conflicting science on the mapping of the headwaters and even amongst Adelson Inc. itself. Therefore, Citizens for St. Edward State Park request an independent committee be appointed by the council to verify the science and critical areas reports for the wetlands, Stream 0226 headwaters, and buffers in the southeast corner of the ball field at St. Edward State Park. And I know this is going to take a lot of thought because this is a project dear to your heart, but an independent study was suggested, and I hope you will consider that. I also, Amy McKendry could not be here today, she has two letters she would like to submit. One is from Mike Prince, who is the director of the Wilderness Awareness Organization, who said they will be kicked out essentially of the park if it's, if the playfield's expanded to two ball fields. And the other is from the Olympic Cricket Club, who said they too will be kicked out of that area because they need the natural setting for their regulation cricket play. They can't use any of the proposals that have come forth so far.
Did you submit those letters to the city clerk?
I will, and there's one for...
Thank you so much, Mrs. Clerk.
And there's one for each of you.
Call the next person, please.
Todd Bergman.
Not here? Who's the next on the list after Todd?
Rebecca Hurt. Hi, I'm Rebecca Hurt. I actually live in Kirkland, 12952 74th Avenue Northeast. As Ann said, we're requesting the council appoint an independent committee, it could be members of citizens or another group, that will independently hire an environmental consultant to verify the critical area science obtained by the city. This includes the verification of the wetland boundary around the playfield, as well as whether or not Stream 0226 is connected to the wetland east and south of the playfield as it was in 2008 in that map. In July, is this working?
Yep.
In July, in a July 2016 email exchanged between Kenmore's Lori Anderson and the State Department of Ecology, the DOE suggested that Ecology or the Army Corps verify the critical area boundaries developed by the city and your consultant ESA Alverson. In an email on July 27, 2016, Lori responded to the Department of Ecology, Paula Anderson, that we are also, quote, "We are also considering your suggestions to have Ecology or the Corps verify the wetland boundary once the final consultant report has been issued." The final consultant report was issued in August of 2016. To date, the public has no knowledge that an independent study of the wetlands boundaries surrounding the area has been done or will be done. The final consultant report was issued, oh, I'm sorry, the science provided by ESA Alverson is inconsistent between its 2008 report on the playfield and the current 2016 report, as Ann said. The maps from 2008 and 2016 contradict each other. Stream 0226 headwaters in the southeast corner of the field likely affects the buffer boundaries' direct environmental damage and mitigation cost requirements. This would result in the report of the, in the 2016 report, the sighting of the stream helps the city avoid high mitigation costs through admitting environmental precautions. We believe there is enough evidence to question whether or not the city and their consultant have provided reliable science, and their work should be independently reviewed. I have reviewed a number of the documents. Since I don't live in Kenmore, I have to, you know, of course I don't keep up with everything you do on the city council. I have many other options. Anyway, but I did review what I, what was, what had been received, and in the, it appears that City of Kenmore has a long-term relationship with ESA Alverson. And in the original contract, I saw nothing that indicated an expiration of the contract...
Could you wrap it up, please?
Huh?
We're past the three minutes. Could you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I am. That, oh, I'm sorry, specifying requirements for renewal. Many of you, some of you know I serve on the hospital board at Evergreen, and our routine statements and contracts have an end point and then requirements of, for, or what will be done for renewal. So I have no way of knowing if the city has done that in the 15 years that you've had this. I guess my ongoing question is, what would be your, what is your plan to verify the study since the, your maps do contradict? And I have the reports from...
Thank you.
Okay, that I will give.
Thank you. Could you just submit it to the clerk?
Yeah.
If you have a written report?
I have it all.
Great, thank you.
Right here.
Yes, and if we can keep these presentations to three minutes so others have time, many have worked hard to limit their presentations to three minutes, and we appreciate you doing so. Who's...
Ann Anderson.
Ann, what was her last name?
Anderson.
Anderson, okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ann Anderson at 16304 81st Place in Kenmore. And I gave you all copies, you see, copies of the email, and do you see this, do you see this in front of you?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So on another note, please be diligent, and let's see some follow-through with KGM. Let's hold, let's be accountable, let's hold WashDOT and KGM accountable, please. On another note, councilmembers, I have questions about city council ethics and whether or not the council may have violated those ethics in regards to the proposed ball field development at St. Edward State Park. So this is just an example of violating ethics. First, I've given you a copy of an email from Little League Advocate and professional lobbyist Doug Levy, that you originally received from him on September 30, 2015. Doug Levy, as you know, is also a close political associate of councilmember Brent Smith. In an email, in my opinion, this is the way I read it, that Mr. Levy appears to recommend that the council should withhold approval of any development agreement and zoning agreement needed by State Parks and Daniels for the hotel development in a park until State Parks gives Kenmore the rights to develop the ball fields. Is this ethical? In his email, Mr. Levy instructs the council as follows, quote, "I wanted to urge all of you to package up a ball field renovation, upgrade, and drainage improvements component in any zoning and development agreements you put together for St. Ed's." Quote, "We urge you to take advantage of this opportunity to integrate the ball fields into development agreements and zoning agreements you will have to approve in order for Mr. Daniels to get the go-ahead." Quote, "We know that Kevin Daniels, that he, we know from Kevin Daniels that he fully understands and even expects to see the city weave this in." End of quote. Brent Smith, do you remember that email, Jane? Okay, so I have several questions on this. How did the developer, Kevin Daniels, know back in September of 2015 that the city was planning on developing a St. Ed ball field when the council never brought this issue before the public until January of 2016? Voila. Has there been a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act here? I think so. It is both legal and/or ethical for the city, is it both legal and/or ethical for the city to withhold the zoning approval of an applicant based on a required compensation in the form of a long-term lease on land owned by the applicant? Does this qualify as a holdup? I think so. Are you putting the applicant, State Parks, under duress and perhaps are using that duress to get State Parks to go along with additional environmental protection violations? And I'm summarizing, okay. In addition to the zoning issue, on May 23, 2016, the council approved an agreement with State Parks where Kenmore would be the SEPA lead agency for the St. Edward State Park ball field proposal. As a lead agency, the city will be responsible for preparation and coordination of the SEPA analysis, including compliance with public notice, comment, and hearing requirements under state and local law. Is it ethical for the city to take this lead agency position when you, City of Kenmore, have a vested interest in approving the development? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
John Hendrickson.
Good evening, John Hendrickson, 5919 Northeast 200 Second Lane, Kenmore. I just wanted to, as you know, the Growth Management Hearings Board on November 28 ruled that the ordinance that you passed amending the public agency utility exception was in violation with state law, and so it found to be illegal. And this isn't the first time, of course, that the city has tried to use a public agency utility exception and had it come back to find that the attempted use was not legal. The first time was in 2008, 2009. Four of the current city council members were on the council at that time, I was on the city council at that time, and Brent Smith was one of the main initiators of that process and intimately knew those details. So you had five councilmembers back in '08, '09 that were familiar with this whole process. And you tried to use this public agency utility exception to build ball fields at Wallace Park, at St. Ed's Park, and also at Loggum Park. And for a year or more, we were told by our staff that we could use that permit, it was legal, even though citizens kept coming up to us and saying no. And not only do we have five councilmembers here that were there then, same city attorney is here that was there then. And it wasn't until one citizen paid $3,000 for an attorney to write an opinion that the city then turned around and told us, "Sorry, the plain reading of the law is that you cannot use this exception." So then the city considered, hey, well, let's just change the law. And we got another letter, and my recollection of the advice is, you could try to do it, but it probably won't work. The end result was, we walked away from three projects where we had invested $290,000 between Wallace, St. Ed's, and Loggum. If we could have changed it, you would have, because I know you guys wanted to just change the law. So what changed that you could now think you can change it again? And why are you putting the citizens through the process of incurring extensive legal fees just to try to get you to do the right thing? So if you look, if you look at your history through this process, starting really with this email from Doug Levy, which is basically through Brent Smith, in September 30 of 2015, he says in here, state, that Kevin Daniels already knows that the city wants to develop the ball fields. Now, you already went through this, you lost $290,000. What makes you think, why was there no discussion? Why isn't anybody standing up or having any kind of debate? Why isn't anybody standing up or having any kind of debate to say, does this make any sense? And I'm not going to have time to run through all those details, but, you know, this ballfield that you're going to do, to add, you already have a field there. If you, to add two fields at 200 feet, it's only good for kids 10 years old and younger. Is there really that much of a need? Are you feeling that much of a need with this project? And why go through all this environmental damage and expense when you can go somewhere else?
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next person.
Tracy Hendershot.
Hi, my name is Tracy Hendershot, 1314 4th Place, Kirkland, Washington. Hi Deputy Mayor and council members, and congratulations, Patty. Like many other, this is regarding the ballfield. Like many other park users, I'm passionate about wildlife trees, wilderness, and we feel that no trees should be removed negatively impacted or die from direct or indirect effects of the ballfield development activities. While the CIPA report says that no trees are currently listed on the plan for removal, park staff has commented that the nearby cottonwood trees would have to be removed, and I have a source of the Friends St. Edward State Park minutes for the October 3 night, 2016 meeting that I'll give to the city clerk. The cottonwood trees are an integral part of the park, they prevent erosion, stabilize stream banks, provide birds with nesting material and shelter for food and for other wildlife. It's also important to, oh, also, I have a couple of references for online sources about the cottonwood trees that I will also give the clerk. Also important to mention that moving the footprint of the ballfield to avoid the wetlands area will possibly affect the drainage of the nearby significant magnificent trees that are between the gravel parking lot and the ballfield. This, now, if these trees went down or the cottonwoods were taken, we would consider this removal. The other thing I wanted to say is the, the ballfield is, the ballfield itself is a breeding ground for this sensitive species of the palliated woodpecker. The adjacent windland is a high-quality habitat for a number of animals, including the woodpecker. I have a couple of references to give the clerk about this. Wetlands delineation St. Edward State Park ballfield area report, it's by Bill Evans, January 20, 2005. And then I have a Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife Priority Habitats and Species report. The park itself is home to deer, coyote, birds, reptiles, rodents, insects. I go there all the time, I've seen many of these animals there. There has been at least one bald eagle nest in the northwest corner of the park, they say it's 1,000 feet away. I've also seen while swimming in our polluted water eagles coming down and getting the fish and then landing in trees in the park, so I know that they're there. And lastly, I wanted to say that the lighting will disorient and disturb nocturnal and nocturnal wildlife, and I have a source for that. It is the, I can supply it to you, but I don't have it tonight. It's the Light Pollution, Light Pollution, The Reversible Scourge on Our Sky by Mary Coolidge, Bird Safe Portland Campaign, Audubon Society of Portland Warbler, it's September, October edition, 2016, volume 80, Nevers 9 and 10, and I can get a copy at your request. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hershaw.
Karen Prince.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, and good evening. I just have two documents I want to enter, and they have to do with the historical preservation of the ballfields. One is a letter from Gregory Griffith, Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer, and this is dated September 30, but there, I believe, is another letter earlier than that, that he deals with the, that the city noticed, the city proposes improvements to the existing grass field, and this is in the National Register of Historic Places. In the letter, which I don't really, I'm not going to read, but that they, he, they have a concern about what appears to be a substantial change in character that will adversely affect the field as a contributing element to the historic district. And the other notice is the nomination of St. Edward State Park to the National Register, and it talks about the sports field, that it says, while recommendations were made in 2006, that a dugout be added, the city recommends that lights and artificial turf be added, all of this is new development. The main thing about this is that this is a, a development, it is not an improvement or renovation. And so I will submit these two. It will change the nature of the park to have that ballfield, and it will change the, the good parts of having the, well, the natural, the natural forest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Prince.
Peter Lance.
Hello, my name is Peter Lance, I live at 6501 Northeast 151st Street in Kenmore. I'd like to just, I've got a question for the council, is the ballfield proposal still in play? Are you still pursuing the artificial turf field? I know you had a setback with the PAUE, and I was wondering if it's even something that the council is going to pursue any further, trying to put the artificial fields in, or if you're moving your attentions elsewhere. I'd like to talk briefly about the parking up there. The reports that you folks are using or accepted from Farr and Pier are really quite inadequate, and I'd invite you to read them with critical thinking, not unencumbered by the thought process, but actually look at them. They are absent a lot of important information and ideas that you need to consider because you're going to have your folks up there on Saturdays trying to use these fields, and the report is, does not address several very important issues. One, the kids show up for these games and they play, but they come about an hour early. And so what you really have is kids and their parents there arriving an hour before the game, half hour, depends on the game, and you already have a game going. All Farr and Pierers did was count the kids that were playing. They did not anticipate in their study the kids that are going to be arriving, and they're going to be there a half hour early or an hour early, and they're going to need places to park. Farr and Pierer did not talk to the park ranger about current parking conditions. It's often at capacity now, there's no room to park, and as much as the City of Kenmore is going to find 20 additional parking spaces, those are some of the same 20 parking spaces that Daniels has found, perhaps, that they are contributing to the field. I don't know who, who's really going to take credit for those 20 additional parking spaces that are found by restriping and doing a little paving, but that's not enough to cover even the new people that are coming, and you're already at capacity on certain Saturdays. So you have an understatement of the parking conditions. Farr and Pierers makes no mention of soccer. Soccer teams are bigger, you have more kids coming, you have more people coming to park. The report is silent about parking, or the soccer, and soccer tournaments, and baseball tournaments. What is going to happen, what are, how many people are really going to be needing the park on tournament days? And so you've got a gross underestimation of a report you really wanted to read because you wanted to believe it was accurate, but it's not complete. It's very, very incomplete, and you're going to need to have a way to work it out with Park Commission to have dedicated parking for the baseball or the ballfields. It's not going to work otherwise, and they're going to have to limit, otherwise, you can't get your people in to use the facilities, this $3 million facility you're building. Very important. And I am out of time, I've got a, a letter for you folks, but please look into it and think about it.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Mooney.
Hi, good evening, Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. I just really want to mainly thank the city manager and the city council for the meeting that you put on the agenda today with Greg Wingard. Just, I'm really appreciative of working together, and, and I want all the best for Kenmore. And as far as some of the follow-up questions, just talking back here with Janet Hayes, and I would encourage you to reach out to her to answer some of your questions. One about the request for proposals, because one of our citizens friends down in the Seattle area apparently has more information from talking to the Montlake people, and it sounds like it's possible that that is being fast-tracked, and that the comments that we were asked to put into Army Corps, which Greg Wingard was making reference to, are all a bit unusual in that fast-tracking and short-cutting, and it may even be that January in 2017 is when that request for proposal could be. I don't know for sure, but we can supply you with the names of folks and to our city manager and through Greg, I would definitely follow up with those letters to Army Corps, et cetera, and Federal Highway Administration, what he said. And then secondly, also, just because I was chatting back with Janet, and she has seen a lot of those scenes that Greg Wingard was making reference to, so I want to acknowledge the teamwork here with Rob Carlinsey and council member. Herbig, thank you for talking to your colleagues, because I'm really appreciative, and I hope that we can work together. And with regard to the question about testing, just specifically, and I thank you, Council Member Curtis, for bringing up testing. That was actually what prompted me to contact our city manager and, and get help from Greg Wingard, and he's extremely professional and articulate, and apparently, and Janet can back it up here if she wants to, but she wanted me to speak. But there's some gravel that, sorry, I'm just still on. So there's apparently gravel that's being put on the site at Lake Point, and you can get a great view from her house, and I bet she would invite you up there if you want to get up there to see. So basically, I don't know, maybe they're covering things up that you might want and have the right to test, and if the settlement says that our city can test, fantastic, go for it, and we would certainly cheerlead something like that happening. Thank you, though, very much, Rob Carlinsey, thank you, council members, thank you.
Thank you.
Orlie Johnson.
You just want to be on the list, you asked.
Greg Palet.
Jared Palet, I'm just here to listen.
Oh, okay.
We thought that was the sign-in sheet. We have to sign in.
Thank you. Any others on the list? Anybody else like to speak? Mrs. Hayes? And you can sign in after.
I will, definite. Janet Hayes at 6303 Northeast 181st, number 301, just buzz the buzzer, you're welcome anytime. I'm mostly there standing, taking pictures in my window. I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you regarding the testing, I have watched piles of gravel that are at the edge of the water by the wharf, I have photos, and they do spread after maybe two loads, they will spread that pile of gravel, you'll see it and then you won't, and my photos are all timestamped, and they're spreading it, I've watched them with the track hole over the ground, so there's gravel covering up a lot of, and being ground down in, covering up a lot of the tracking and the splash that is carrying the demo onto the property. That's about it. The one thing no one mentioned was that we are getting metal that is in online containers and uncovered and has sat there, one load of 13 containers for 12 days, in, in the biggest windstorm that we were supposed to have and rain. Just so you know that those are draining out onto the ground in the southeast corner. I have pictures if that would be an area that should be tested. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another? Oh, yeah, Janet, please sign in. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any concerns about the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda is approved as submitted. The business agenda. Adopt Ordinance Number 160431, amending the 2015-2016 biennial budget for the City of Kenmore, Washington, Joanne Gregory, Finance and Administration Director.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, council members. So prior to the close of the biennium, it's important to review all the fund budgets and take into consideration any unappropriated or significant expenditures for actions or activities that were not anticipated in the budget, and to adjust the fund budgets accordingly so as not to exceed their approved legal limits. A public hearing was held on November 21, at which time the recommended budget amendments were presented in detail. In the general fund, strong development revenue contributed to recommended revenue adjustments of an additional $977,000. In the expenditure budgets, there were 11 individual line items, adjustments which total These result in an amended ending fund balance of $2,146,000 for budget purposes, although the actual projected ending fund balance is expected to exceed $3 million. Other funds recommended for adjustment are the Street Fund, the Public Art Fund, the Kenmore Village Fund, the Park Impact Fee Fund, and the Park Capital Fund. Therefore, citywide, the recommended expenditures total $1,594,000, and revenues total $1,509,000. Of these balances, $502,000 are strictly inter-fund transactions. So with your approval, Ordinance 16-0431 will provide the final amendments to the 2015-16 budget. Are there any questions tonight regarding the proposed budget amendments?
I have a, maybe I'm on the wrong one here. Were we supposed to have a public hearing before this? Am I looking at the wrong agenda here?
No, there was no public hearing scheduled tonight.
Okay, we're going right here, okay. Are there any questions of, of Gregory?
We, we did a public hearing on November 21.
Thank you. I don't know how I got this agenda up here. It's because I'm not using my surface, that's why. December 12th, okay, so, we should take a vote on that at this point, okay?
Unless there are any questions.
Huh? No other, no questions, no comments, right? Okay. Will the clerk?
Do you need a motion, first?
Need a motion, okay.
Thank you for my help that's up here.
I'll second.
Okay. So we moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance Number 160431, amending the 2015-16 biennial budget for the City of Kenmore, Washington. All in favor indicate by, raise the right hand, huh? Oh, the clerk will take the roll, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Nieske?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herbig?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved unanimously. Adopt Ordinance Number 160429, 2017-2018 biennial budget for the City of Kenmore, Washington, Joanne Gregory, Finance and Administration Director.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council members. So this, this is the grand finale, Ordinance 16-0429, which, if passed tonight, will provide for the 2017-2018 biennial budget. Public meetings on the budget began in October and were held throughout the month of November, and two public hearings were also held, one on November 14 and one on November 28. The budgeted revenues for the biennium are The budgeted revenues for the biennium are $54,396,000 and expenditures are $56,711,000. The general fund is balanced in that budgeted expenditures do not exceed revenues. In fact, the revenues exceed the expenditures as budgeted for the biennium by about $166,000. Other non-operating funds, such as the park impact fees, the REIT, capital, and enterprise funds, in some cases utilize accumulated reserves to support capital improvement programs and inter-fund transactions. There was one change made to the budget since our recent discussions, and that was a $50,000 reduction of expenditures in the Public Art Fund that had been suggested for art on the wall on State Route 522. This budget also includes an employee salary plan for 2017 and 2018 that has been updated based on a recent market review by an independent consultant. A 2% wage adjustment based on the Seattle area Consumer Price Index is recommended to take effect on January 1st. Are there any questions regarding the 2017-2018 proposed budget?
If there are no questions, do I hear a motion for approval?
I didn't have that on. If there are no questions, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Oh, second? She's talking into my deaf ear over here.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 160429, 2017-18 biennial budget for the City of Kenmore, Washington. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, before I vote, I'd like, just like to say congratulations. I know we had the sparkling cider with the AAA bond rating, but after all this work, I feel like we ought to at least have a moment, right? So yes, I'm in favor of passing the budget.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herbig?
I want to say thank you to Joanne, thank you to Rob, all the staff. And I was excited looking at their, our salary plan here to see that even our lowest-paid workers are getting something that resembles the living wage. So, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Six zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the Lake Point Commercial Site Development Plan, CSDP, and the Transportation Mitigation Agreement. Huh? Did I miss something?
Yes.
C, oh, sorry, okay. Item C. Adopt ordinance number 160428, integrating low-impact development principles and best management practices into the city's development-related codes, rules, and standards. Richard Sawyer, Surface Water Program Manager, and Chris Overly, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Good evening. So I am here one last time to adopt ordinance 160428. I have presented before today at various times in September, October, various code amendments that modify several sections of our municipal code to integrate low-impact development practices and BMPs into our development standards. This ordinance will also adopt the King County 2016 Surface Water Design Manual, which has been updated with many of the technical engineering standards that include LID principles and BMPs, as well as the 2016 Stormwater Pollution Prevention Manual, which kind of works in junction with that for water quality illicit discharge BMPs. We have completed all the requirements and held a public hearing on November 14th and received no comment. Various open houses to receive public input, and we've completed the SEPA process and the Department of Commerce review, so tonight we are ready unless there are any other additional questions from council for adoption.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 160428, integrating low-impact development principles and best management practices into the city's development-related codes, rules, and standards. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herbig?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six zero, unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Was it something else? Thank you, Richard. A lot of work goes into putting this together. It's, uh...
Okay.
Item D, Lake Point Commercial Site Development Plan and Transportation Mitigation Agreement, Extension and Funding Agreement. Council, City Manager Carl Lindsey.
Yeah, if I could just speak to that low-impact development ordinance that you just passed, that was a ton of work and should also...
Been going on for a long time.
If you want to start pausing after great achievements of my staff, that's another one to pause for.
That's a huge one.
But...
Sorry, we need even more questions than...
Well, and I think it's, I think it's something that's worth shouting from the rooftops. I think we should do a press release and really do what we can to let the public know that that just got adopted because that is a very progressive and important piece of legislation you just passed. So, on to the Lake Point CSDP, which is the commercial site development permit, and the associated TMA, which is the Transportation Mitigation Agreement. I've asked Brian Hampson, for you and the public's benefit, just to give a brief overview of the current permit that is currently alive. And it's being requested of the developer that it be kept alive on a year-to-year basis under certain conditions. But Brian, if you could give a brief overview of the current permit and what it all involves.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, council. So the current permit consists of a mixed-use development to be built in phases on approximately 48 acres of the Lake Point site. The project, as it's currently permitted, is 350,000 square foot of office, 300,000 square foot of retail and commercial, including a movie theater, 1,200 residential units. This is both rental and condominiums, a marina, 4,200 surface and underground parking spaces, a new road that connects SR 522 and 68th Avenue Northeast. The public ask, uh, excuse me, the public access items are promenade, viewpoints, public gathering areas for 50 people, interpretive trails, my eyes are going out, 50 commuter parking stalls and a transit stop. The permit status, as Rob mentioned, the CSDP and the TMA are issued at this point. They'll be expiring at the end of this year, December 31st, 2016, and the Shoreline substantial development permit expired in 2007. That's a brief overview of the project.
Thank you, Brian. And that CSDP was approved in 2001, and it has been extended multiple times since then. There is a section of the code that allows the city manager to grant extensions on site plan expiration dates under certain conditions, and that's what's been happening, including the one that was granted about a year ago, this time a year ago. And this one's a little different because we're actually proposing not just an extension, but multiple extensions, and there's money involved, meaning that the developer agrees to reimburse us for our consultant costs related to the project. And if the developer breaks ground by the end of the year 2020, then he would be reimbursed for those expenses. So about two years ago, Widener contracted with Pioneer Towing to purchase the Lake Point property. Widener is still conducting site feasibility and evaluating development options. As a result, Lake Point and Pioneer Towing and Widener Apartment Homes, all associated with this project, have requested additional extensions to the CSDP and TMA expirations. So Lake Point has continued to develop good faith effort and project-level planning in moving the Lake Point project forward. Examples of this can be found in recital H of the attached agreement. That's on page two of the attached agreement. So Widener's assembled a team of architects and engineers and planners all to keep moving forward on developing the concept that they would like for this project. I concur that they need additional time for further planning and being able to assess options and to be able to arrive at a feasible project that can move forward and help the city achieve its downtown goals. So in keeping with the city code, the attached agreement between the city and Lake Point and Pioneer Towing and Widener Apartment Homes extends the CSDP and TMA expiration dates for several one-year periods up to December 31st, 2020, with key required milestones in each year. And those are all outlined in the attached agreement. Like I said, this agreement needs council approval because of the arrangement for reimbursement of the city's consultant fees that it's spending on the project. And like I said earlier, the developer would recover that money if and when they develop by the end of 2020. We've been meeting regularly with Lake Point. We believe that they, like I said, they are making good faith effort in moving forward. They've been in property acquisition mode, so not only are they under contract for the large site, but they've been in the process of acquiring neighboring properties as well, which also is an indication of the progress and the good faith effort that they're making. So with that, I recommend that you approve this CSDP and TMA extension, what our city attorney calls an extension and funding agreement. And please note that it's substantial to the form attached here, too, meaning that there might be some subsequent minor edits and changes, all of which would still be in keeping with what you're adopting tonight.
Sir, Rob, I just want this to be crystal clear here. I'm not, I don't have a major issue with this going forward, but I want to make sure that we're being very clear with the point that even though they're paying us up to $150,000 for our costs in 2017 and $250,000 in 18 and 19, we're still going to essentially be giving them the money back through reduced permitting fees or other sorts of city revenues. We are still spending, looking at this, somewhere around $650,000 of city funds. It just isn't coming directly out of our pocketbook right now. I just want to make sure we're all very clear on that point and that we're not getting something for free here.
That's right. This, the developer would recover these funds when they break ground and only when they break ground, and it would be through either reduced permitting fees or through future revenues to the city that come out of the project. The idea here is that it reduces our risk rather than us spending a bunch of money and then not having a project. We only spend the money when there's a project and when they break ground.
No, and I appreciate that, and I think the totally defensible way to go forward. I just want to make sure that all of my colleagues do realize that this is a cost to the city, even if it doesn't appear directly as a cost in our budget.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I'd actually just take it even one step further and say it's actually something that is already, in a way, could be construed as a give towards any negotiation in a development agreement.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with it in that even in the end, to see that this project proceeds, the city's going to have to contribute something to it in some way, somehow. And this is a viable way to commit to some of that support, but not risk that amount of money if the project doesn't proceed. And the fact that the developer is willing to fund this upfront is another indicator of his desire and his commitment to proceeding with this. It is a very complicated site to develop. Be much easier for him to develop this development in Maltby or someplace else where it's flat ground, it doesn't, isn't a garbage dump, and all sorts of problems, wetland problems and so on. So this is a difficult project to go ahead with, and I think he's approaching it by leaving no rock, no rock unturned and looking, and studying it very carefully. And it's not something that you can say, okay, let's build and start digging. It takes, takes good, more preparation than I think anybody who appeared really felt it would in the beginning. But to see that they're progressing and see that he's procuring property around the site, all these are indications of, hey, I just might see this in my lifetime, so I'm looking forward to it. Councilmember Herbig?
To kind of build on the point that I was making earlier, this is the first step in, and again, I'm not speaking against the project. I think in the end, at the end of the day, something happening at Lake Point is good for, is good for Kenmore. But I think we need to be very careful as we go forward with this to really take into account all of the costs that are, that the city is going to see. And that is lost revenues on top of infrastructure we build, all of this, and really have a very good sense of what we're spending or what revenues we're giving up in order to make this happen and be public with that and accept that. You know, they, they're going to go after probably the multifamily tax exemption, which would potentially be hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars in lost property tax revenue potentially. We need to really examine every one of these and make sure that we are getting the bang for our doll, you know, the best bang for our buck and that we are, if not booking these in our budget, at least mentally booking them in our budget, so that we realize the cost that, of the resources the city's putting in to make this successful. And we do need to be careful to some point where the line is between us helping, us helping something happen for the betterment of Kenmore versus us helping a private developer make a profit. There's a line in there somewhere. I'm not sure exactly where the line is because there is a big public benefit to this going forward, as long as it's done the right way. But I want to make sure that we are being very, that we're systematically looking at all the costs as they come to us and that we're kind of keeping a book of all of this going forward so that we know at the end of the day what we're on the hook for in lost revenues, in lost permitting fees, in infrastructure upgrades, because it will not be a small cost to the city for this to be successful, and we need to be upfront and open about that.
Any other comments? Councilmember Sperry?
Well, I am in favor of extending the agreement. I was reflecting about, I wonder how many people realize that the discussion that we had in the beginning of our meeting about the industrial use and this project is the same land. And we have a really great story here of a reclamation of what was used to be a dumping ground for highway waste. And every time people say that it used to be a dump, I just say, so did you, village. And so we have a great opportunity to make what's a brownfield and has environmental issues into a greenfield. The other thing is we have an opportunity to showcase some of the new technology and innovation and creativity that's so prevalent in our community, including innovative ways of heating this. I know the developer is considering that. And I think it's also important to realize that if it was easy, it would have been done already. And we can't always think that it's going to be public money that's going to, you know, make this project work, you know, provide that difference. But I believe that the innovation, for example, on looking at innovative ways of using energy, today's paper, the Gates Foundation, they're contributing towards a $1 billion fund, looking at ways to alternative energy sources. And, you know, that's just one article in the paper, but think of all the possibilities. So I appreciate, I think this is a good agreement for the city in this stage where we are not taking on risk of incurring costs that would not be reimbursed by the developer, and I do support it.
Any other comments? I think... I think a point that I'd like to make that hasn't been made, at least I didn't hear it out of this ear, it might have come into this one, I didn't register, but this, keeping the site development permit alive keeps the parcel together, and if this stopped, then the owner of the property could easily sell portions of it piecemeal, and then the whole property would develop bit by bit, and we'd have much less control over how the property developed and how it would fit into the overall scheme of things in the city of Kenmore. So I think it's important for us to continue this good working relationship with the developer and to maintain this property all as a unit, as a site. So with that, do you have any other, oh, I guess the next item is the city manager's staff report.
We still have to vote on this.
We have to vote on it. You want to vote on that?
Yes, yes, you need to vote on this.
Do we, it's not an ordinance, do I hear a motion that we proceed with the site, the extension of the site development permit and the mitigation agreement on Lake Point?
Your honor, if you could actually read it, that'd be best, if it would be official and just read where it says move to authorize.
What did I say here? Well, it isn't written here, so I just read what it was written.
Read it off of my agenda, would that help you?
You want me to give you mine?
The agenda?
The business item agenda. So has anybody...
I don't have the agenda bill opened, is that what you're reading?
Yes.
Okay. Please read it.
So has somebody made the motion, or should I?
If you can make a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign and execute the CSDP and the TMA Extension Agreement number sixteen dash C six, excuse me, C one six two seven for Lake Point, for the Lake Point project substantial to the form attached in Exhibit A.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the, okay, will the clerk read the motion? How's that? And take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you. Unanimous approval. Staff report?
Thank you. It's been a great year.
It has been.
Really exciting. Thank you for allowing me to help you accomplish some really fun things this year, and I don't have anything other than, yes, we're going to have one-on-ones this week, so please assume your regular time. And last but not least, have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember reports. Start with Councilmember Danuski.
I don't have anything to add, just happy holidays to everyone.
Councilmember Smith?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Councilmember Sperry?
Happy holidays.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
I'd say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody as well, and I want to say thank you to Stacy and Nigel for cluing me in and saying, hey, you forgot this, and keep me on my toes these last two weeks. And I'm still fighting this cold that I've had for three weeks now, and it's still got my ear all plugged up. And again, I want to thank Patty Safran for her help and all she's done for the city, and wish her the best in her retirement, so have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, everybody. See you in January.